I said you please stand for the pledge of flag. I'll ask school board member Wagner to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I've asked school board member Leary to lead us in our invocation.
Power has please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for this great opportunity we have to come and serve and work to the betterment of the school district and all of the students and children in the county.
Yes.
We ask that you will bless each and every one of us as we make important decisions and be with us as we leave today and move through the week.
Yes.
In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Board, welcome to the November 22nd School Board Reorganizational Meeting. And our first task today is to elect a chairman of the board.
Mr. Superintendent, who was acting as our chairman, I would like to make a motion that we consider Sandra Gilliard as the chairman.
Okay, we've got one nomination. And help me remember, do we vote on that or do we just take a backup nomination?
Traditionally, that's how we've done it. We'll do that and then we'll do a vice chairman after, I think.
And who are the chairs? I just talked to them, will conduct the election for the vice chair.
You've got to take other nominations if people want to nominate someone else.
We have one nomination.
I move the nominations close and second the nomination for Ms. Gilliard.
Okay, so we've got one nomination and I guess we need to take a vote on nominations closing?
Yes, anybody else? Craig, you would ask anybody else any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations before we vote to close nominations? Seeing none? Is it all, I guess we just need to take?
Roll to close nominations first.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. You've already made a motion to close nominations. Did we have a second?
Second, Doc.
Second to close nominations. Any discussion? All in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And this time, we will vote on the nomination for Sandra Gilliard as chair of the board. And do we have a, you gave the second for that motion, right? David made the motion, Phil made the second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of Sandra Gilliard as our next chairman of the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same sign. Congratulations to Ms. Gilliard as our new chairman of the board.
I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
It's with you there, Ms. Gilliard.
Just don't hit me.
She's been there before.
She has.
Yeah. Matter of fact, I think she's done it a couple of years, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm so used to telling her what to do, she's like my sister.
I take my pillow.
You got kind of settled in over there, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, this was home. Nothing like being over there in District 1.
Let her pass her cup to her.
Yeah, the names.
Although I'd love to be Sandy Gilliard for a day.
Yeah. You, the relatives.
Well, it'd be, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They don't come any, they don't.
Oh, you've already moved mine.
They don't come any better than Ms. Sister Gilliard, I can tell you that. Even though she's hornswoggled me into taking over her, filling in for her for the expulsion committee on the 29th.
We'll be in Tampa.
I know, I know. I'm not going, I'm not, I'm not going to Tampa.
Next on the list is nominations for a vice chair. Madam Chair.
Oh, I thought you were just gonna go ahead with everything.
You got the gavel.
Okay.
You have the gavel.
Just humbled and I thank you. And as was already stated, we will need prayer each, each one of us and we'll work together. If we can get through a pandemic, we can get through any.
I've heard that, yeah.
Right.
Just thank you for your trust. I'll do my very best and I'll be the first to say, I don't know if I don't know. And I would trust you to help me and to lead. And again, I just want to say welcome to Mr. Leary.
Thank you.
Have seen you around and you know the ins and outs and the running and the parliamentary procedure, et cetera. Mrs. Wagner, I'm just meeting you. I recall seeing you just a few times here. Just want to welcome you. And David, you and Holly are just stalwarts and I appreciate you. Dr. Serency, former student attorney. Douglas, God bless you. Just, just thank you. We'll go ahead and get this taken care of. At this time, the floor is open for the election of a vice chair.
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and make another motion if that's not uncalled for, board attorney, is it? I would like to just nominate Linda Wagner. She's new. She's gonna learn quick. And I think that it would be, she's gonna learn a lot in Tampa and with her background, she'll learn a lot from Sandy and when she covers for the chairman, if the chairman's not here, I think she'd do a fine job. But well, everybody else, it's up to you guys.
Okay, we have one name on the floor. That's Mrs. Wagner, Mrs. Linda Wagner. Floor is still open for nominations for vice chair. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we close on the said one name.
So moved.
Right, it's been properly moved.
I'll second it.
And second, it's been moved by Mr. Phil Leary. That we close on the one said name, Mrs. Linda Wagner, and it was second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All right, any questions before we entertain a vote? All right, all in favor of Mrs. Linda Wagner being the vice chair of the school board? Let it be known by aye.
Sorry to interrupt, but the motion was just for closing the names.
Oh, okay, all right.
And we'll do a separate motion and second.
Okay, all right, and we got the motion and the second. So now we're ready to vote.
To vote on the closing of the nominations.
Oh, okay.
Just the closing of the nominations.
All right, yes, because that's what we did.
I make a motion, I make a motion to nomination cease. Is that what we need to do?
I'll second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that the nomination ceased on the one said name and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposers, hearing none, the motion carries five zero. Now, we're ready to vote. Oh, she's officially?
To nominate.
All right, all right, all in favor of Mrs., this is a lot. Okay, all in favor of, but, but we gotta do it the right way. Yes, sir.
So we appreciate your guidance. Nomination and a second for Mrs. Wagner.
Okay, all right. All in favor of Mrs. Linda Wagner?
Nope, now Mr. Buckles needs to.
Oh, to nominate.
I've already nominated her.
The nominee, the first vote was just to close the nomination.
Okay.
Now this is the vote to actually appoint.
Right, so we say all in favor of Mrs. Linda Wagner.
So there will be a motion and a second.
Also, do.
I make a motion that we, we select Linda Wagner to be our vice chairman.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that Mrs. Linda Wagner becomes the vice chair of the school board and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. Are we ready to vote? Entertaining any questions, all right? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers, hearing none, our motion carries five zero.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. All right, do you have copies of the meeting dates and times? Do we need to have a motion for that or we just vote on it? Just give you time to look over it and see and then we'll entertain a motion.
Of course, Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Is, is, you're good with this superintendent?
Yes, and actually, Susan and I worked on this and I do want to point out that the time, we did go back to a 3:30 time as a recommendation. We did try the 4:30 time up until this past meeting and I don't think we saw a tremendous increase in our attendance, which I think was a reason for that. But again, this is a board, a board decision, but I just want to point out the time there. And again, the, let's see, December, January, February are one meeting per month and then the remainder are two meetings per month with the exception of June. We have one in June, is that correct? And the rest of them are two meetings a month.
And we can have emergency meetings and special call board meetings and there's a lot of latitude. If we do have a big meeting that would draw huge public input, we could adjourn and go to an auditorium, which we've done many times over the past year.
In this past year, you know, we're required to have at least one meeting a month, but there have been times when, for whatever reason, I see there's a, a need to cancel a meeting that, you know, if we feel like we can really do everything in the one, once per month. So I try to use that latitude and, but again, we'll put it on the schedule twice a month just so you can block out your calendar.
If, if I could ask, you said you had changed it to 4:30 for a period of time. How long did that occur?
I think we did it, what, two or three months, Susan, you recall?
We, we had at least three meetings.
Yeah, I was.
Because a lot had been said to me during, during campaigning about the, the times and I've heard both directions that it made no difference when you did change it to a later time where, where maybe possibly parents could attend in a, an easier manner. But I was told that you had, but I didn't know how long and whether that was really put out there for the parents where they would know when the meetings were. So my only concern is that it's in the middle of the day and that's what concerns had been brought to me is that not everyone can take off work to come.
Well, I want y'all to discuss.
We had actually, I would say, zero increase in those three. Now it was three, you know, meetings, three months, I think. But we saw zero. I mean, it doesn't really faze me, 3:30 or 4:30. I would say that with our high schools getting out at four or, you know, around four, that, you know, a teacher could get off work and come to a meeting if they, you know.
Or if they wanted to come, they could make arrangements with the principal and I'm certain that we could figure that out. To add, and maybe give a little more information with what Holly said, for decades, we have altered meetings, we have scheduled board meetings in different ends of the counties, different venues. We've gone to Melrose, Anterlock and Crescent City, different places to try to make it convenient to the community. And unless there's a pressing issue in, in the community that we're aware of, we really don't have. Our problem is when you hold these meetings, you need your people who work in the various offices to come down and give us the technical information that the state requires to clarify for the board. And when you hold meetings later or in, in various areas of the county, and I, you know, I'll do whatever the majority of this board wants to do, but you, you wind up not having these people or they can't, they work all day and then they've got to go work overnight and they don't get, they don't get paid to do that. So it's a, it's, it's, it's a problem. It's a logistic nightmare.
We even tried the six o'clock and.
But if, if people, if people, if we know we've got a hot button issue that.
Yeah, we can always change it.
We can always change it, we can move it to the venue, we can, you know, we normally know ahead of time what the problem is. And then if somebody brings it to our attention, then we can set up a special meeting in, in an auditorium where, and I've seen literally hundreds of people, I think we all have, show up for meetings like that.
A lot of flexibility.
Mr. McGinnis is who brought that up and he said that, you know, while he was campaigning, he had heard that too.
Yeah.
From several people, so.
I mean, I, I completely understand if, if you have them, if you've changed it and nobody ends up showing up, any different, but, and, and I'm not going to object to the 3:30 so long as there are, when you do have those hot topics, that we might, could make
I agree.
Arrangements because on those particular topics, there's a lot of people, I believe, in our county that want to be able to be more involved in those issues.
Okay, all right, Mr. Leary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Well, I'm, I'm a strong advocate of, of holding all public meetings after five o'clock, but, but obviously, what, what I think the issue is, is that there's been a very poor job by our press and both written and the radio stations of advertising the agendas. It took me two and a half hours to go through the, the agenda last week and, and having every school improvement plan, you know, articulated in that, you know, and I was surprised there, there weren't people here. But maybe everybody's so happy that things are going so well and the superintendent administration are doing such a great job that they don't want to. But, you know, I, I do think that, you know, in deference to the staff, I know it's difficult, you know, for years when I served in county and state positions, you know, holding meetings at night is difficult and unless it's something that's, you know, overwhelmingly important or, or needs that opportunity, you know, I, I think that, you know, I, as a, as a constellation, I, I'd say, you know, let, let's do four o'clock and, and so the high schools are at least out and, you know, they would have an opportunity, you know, a parent or a teacher or a student to, to be here. But, yeah, I, I mean, it's a, it's kind of a catch 22. But I am hoping that, and I am going to talk to the editor about, you know, publicizing our, our meeting dates and times and our agendas, at least, you know, they'll be public, you know. Now, they can go to the website and look at it, but that's not, people don't always know to do that.
All right, he's, he's making a note of that and, and the concern would be just how many get that.
Right.
You know, get the Black Daily News. The Marquis certainly advertises it out front, but again, I.
And they post it on, on the website, so.
Right, that, making sure that we do our very best to accommodate our, our stakeholders and the superintendent has already stated, very flexible. If there's a hot topic, by all means, we will be looking at 4:30 or even five, whatever would accommodate the, the people in doing that. Four o'clock, maybe the superintendent will entertain that later. I, I'm not sure.
Is that, is that something that Mr. Leary needs to make a motion about or, I'm just, I'm curious just to make.
Thirty minutes later.
Really looking for more input than, you know, making a change. I mean, I don't have a problem with the 3:30 meeting.
Our only problem is, is having the availability of technical personnel that can answer questions because we can meet till the cows come home and if you don't have people here that can answer the questions specifically, we're just gonna sit here and talk around our, in circles. If, if it's a hot button issue in any area of the county or it's of tremendous concern, then we need to look at holding a special meeting in that community and get our ducks in a row and have everybody show up so we don't have to try to contact Mr. Bowling by telephone or Rhonda or, or Ms. France or whoever that may be involved in the, in the specific dynamics of the issue. And, of course, I've, I've been doing it so long, I'm, I've seen, if it can be tried, we've tried it. And it doesn't, I don't have all the answers, but I do know that if it's something serious and Ms. Wagner or Ms. Gilliard or any of us get a call, then we're gonna call the superintendent and we can hold a special meeting and, and address it after hours in a, in a forum where we'll have the information available. But that's, that's just me.
Can I ask the superintendent one more question? So, and, and really, you haven't had any complaints, have you? I mean, from parents or?
About the time?
Yeah.
About the time. I haven't. Susan, have you?
Not recently.
Not recently, yeah.
Well, Madam Chairman, unless there's additional debate, I'd, I'd move we accept and approve the, the board meeting date, schedule and time.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept the established 2022, 2023 meeting dates and times and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. Any further discussion? We're ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers, hearing none, our motion carries five zero. Thank you, great discussion.
Again, just a caveat, we're very flexible and, you know, we, we could definitely change times, locations, dates as needed, so, you know, nothing's in stone.
And I, I think just, we, we've already voted, but we all need to keep in mind what Mr. Buckles said regarding when we hear something, you know, a, a hot topic or, or an item, we need to touch bases immediately with the superintendent and then at that time, he would be able to make a decision to, I think it has to be seven days, what, what is the time?
Seven days.
Seven days, so to make sure that the word gets out there that not 3:30, but for special.
And actually, you recall just an example of Mr. Buckles talking about back in 2018 when we were dealing with the aftermath of the marginal storm of Douglas?
Yes.
We actually scheduled meetings in each of the, the three areas because it was a hot topic.
Yes.
Scheduled them at night, had great turnout. So there are times where it, it needs to be done and we are very flexible to do that.
And the superintendent by law serves as secretary to the board, so he is our secretary.
Thank you. All right, item number four, the appointment of a board member to serve as the board's representative on the small school district council.
I'd like to nominate Phil Leary.
Can I ask a question? Is that the group that Chris Doolan?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
You would know Chris.
And we have a breakfast scheduled.
Listen, listen how he's trying to sell it.
No, no, no. I was just saying.
He's having breakfast.
You can come eat breakfast whether you're the contact or not.
He would know Chris from all his dealings in Ohio.
Chris and I have had our, had fun times over the years.
We all, we all have, yeah.
Yeah, he's one of a kind, isn't he?
Yep.
Okay, any other nominations to come before the board?
I move the nomination cease.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that the nomination cease on the one said name, Mr. Phil Leary, and it was second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All right, all in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers, hearing none. The motion to cease on the one said name stands. Now we're ready to vote, I mean, to nominate, right? Okay?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Holly Pickens to.
No, no.
No, we're doing that.
Finish up that one.
Okay.
Remember how we did.
I got you, never mind.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Phil Leary to serve as our representative on the small school district council.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that Mrs. Phil Leary serves as our board member on the boards, as the board's representative on the small school districts and second by Mr. David Buckles. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers, hearing none, our motion carries five zero. All righty, appointment of a board member to serve as the board's representative on district insurance committee.
I, I was going to make the, the announcement or the recommendation that we select Holly Pickens given her background with this. I don't know that she wants to, but she certainly has done a great job and, and knows her stuff. So I'm nominating her to serve.
I'll second that.
All right. No other names? Motion by Mr. David Buckles for Mrs. Holly Pickens to serve as our representative on the insurance committee and second by Mr. Phil Leary. Now, that was to close on the one said name? All right, so now we need another motion.
We need a motion to cease.
We've done the cease on the one name.
We didn't say aye.
Now we need to vote.
Yes, on ceasing nominations, yeah.
Yes.
Cease all nominations.
I make a motion we cease all nominations.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens to cease on the one said name and second by Mr. David Buckles. All right, all in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers, hearing none, motion carries to cease on the one said name. Now, we vote for, to vote for Mrs. Pickens.
All right, I'd not nominated Ms. Pickens.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Buckles nominated Mrs. Holly Pickens as our insurance, district insurance representative. Mr. Leary, Mr. Phil Leary seconded. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers, hearing none, our motion carries. We're now ready to appoint a board member to serve as the board's representative on the expulsion committee. You have to counsel me, Mr. Attorney. I would like to volunteer if, if no one, I'm learning now and I'm, I'm in a groove, so.
Mr. Attorney, and Ms.
I don't know how it goes.
Madam Chairman, I would like to nominate Sandy Gilliard to remain on the expulsion committee. I know that when she's not there, some of us are asked to cover, which I will be doing at the next meeting.
Because you're not, you're not the one making the motion.
Okay, oh, okay.
David saved you.
I made your motion.
Okay, because he made the motion, okay. All right, did we get a second?
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that I, Sandra Gilliard, remain as the board representative on the expulsion committee and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. That, that was to close on the one said name. All right, now we need the motion.
We got a vote on.
A vote, so that we could, oh, we got a vote to close.
I vote the motion cease.
Okay.
I'll second.
Or make a motion.
Voted, I mean, Mr. David Buckles voted that we cease.
Motion.
The motion, motion that we cease on the one said name and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers, hearing none, our motion carries. Now we're ready to vote.
To appoint.
To appoint me as.
I make a motion we appoint Sandra Gilliard to be the representative on the expulsion committee.
I second.
Motion by Mr. David Buckles that I, Sandra Gilliard, serve as the representative on the expulsion committee and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers, hearing none, our motion carries. All right, the appointment of board members to serve as a board representative on the calendar committee.
I would volunteer to do that.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chairman, we appoint Holly Pickens to serve on the calendar committee.
All right, Mr. David Buckles nominated Mrs. Holly Pickens to serve as the board representative on the calendar committee and it was second by Mr. Phil Leary. All in favor that for Ms. Holly Pickens to serve in this position?
For the nominations.
Are there any other nominations?
For the nomination to close.
Any, any other nominations?
I make a motion nomination close.
Second.
All right, Mr. David Buckles, motion that the nomination close on the one said name, Holly Pickens and second by Mrs. Linda Wagner. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers, hearing none. That motion carries five zero now.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we select Holly Pickens to serve on the calendar committee.
Can I second? I'll second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that Ms. Holly Pickens serve as our representative on the calendar committee and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers, hearing none, our motion carries five zero. All right, we're at item number eight, appointment of board members to serve on the St. John's River State College Adult Education Advisory Board. That's a mouthful. Okay?
Can I ask a question, Madam Chairman? What, what is exactly is that, Superintendent? What, I mean, what are the duties?
Have anybody?
Mr. McGinnis did it.
Name served once and then, then, Mr. McGinnis did it once.
Well, we have, you know, we turned over adult ed to the college to administer, so I'm sure it's just somebody just, you know, to represent the district there and give them input. So essentially, and I have not been to one of those meetings, any of the staff, do you have any input at all on that? Okay. Yeah, so I'm sure it's just in case they have a question of the district.
They do, I know that they have a couple of meetings.
Madam Chairman, I move that, to nominate David Buckles. His exas, experience would be outstanding appointment.
I'll second that.
All right, any other nominations? All right, I need a motion that we close on the one said name.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Phil Leary that we close on the one said name. I did not get a second, I jumped his ass. And a second by Mrs. Linda Wagner that we close on the one said name, Mr. David Buckles, to serve as our representative on the St. John's River State College Adult Education Advisory Board. All right, we are now.
All those, take the vote?
Yes, we're ready to vote. All righty. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers, hearing none, our motion carries five zero. Now we're ready to get the vote for.
So moved.
All right.
Mr. Buckles.
Second. All right, it's been moved by Mr. Phil Leary that Mr. David Buckles does represent us as the St. John's River State College Adult Education Advisory Board member. And second by Mrs. Linda Wagner. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers, hearing none, our motion carries five zero. Any public comment? Righty?
None.
Hearing none. We do have an emergency item, so we go out our regular session and into emergency session. The resolution canvassing results of the bond election.
Madam Chair, this, uh, the timing of this, we talked through the supervisor elections and there has to be a ten day period of time after the election that the canvassing board has an opportunity to, you know, to certify this and account any, any, um, votes coming from overseas and so forth. So we've received this yesterday or Friday, Friday, and, uh, that's the timing while we're doing it now. And again, this is gonna be the first official step of, um, implementing our bond referendum.
Okay.
All right, and so we have, we are within the ten days, you said?
Yeah, the ten days have, have been over and thank you, Mr. Leary, for, uh, providing, um, some additional recommendations. We did talk to our attorney, just changed some subtle language in there and, uh, Susan talked to him and we made that change. Yeah, this is, just a small adaptation.
Right, I saw it.
All right, so we need a motion and a second.
A motion to, uh, pass a resolution.
I make a motion that we pass a resolution to, uh, accept the results of the canvassing, the canvassing results of the bond election.
I second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the resolution of the canvassing results of the bond election. And second by Mrs. Holly Pickens, any discussion? All right, we're ready to vote. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers, hearing none, our motion carries five zero.
Thank you, board.
We are now out of the emergency session, back into our regular meeting. At this time, we will have our reports from the board members. We're gonna start with you, Mrs. Pickens, and we'll move to your right.
Um, we had a swearing in this morning and, um, Mr. Leary and Ms. Wagner and myself were sworn in. Um, I said then, and I'll say again, I am honored to serve this district. They're fabulous employees and, um, I feel good about the direction we're going. And, uh, I promise that I'll do as, as good as I possibly can. And I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mrs. Pickens. Mr. Buckles?
Uh, I'll echo the same sentiments of Sandy. It is an honor and a privilege to serve the children and, and parents and citizens of Putnam County, but, uh, mostly the kids. It really gets to your heart when you get out there and you see what they're doing and particularly like me with so many grandkids and different ones. I just, I'm all over the county and have a, have a blast. Um, I do, um, look forward to Phil and I getting together because of his background with lobbying in Tallahassee. Uh, he and I spent a lot of time together years ago in Tallahassee and.
And I bought you a lot of dinners.
And you bought me, yeah. Yeah, well, I think our bureau probably bought most of those, but. Anyway, we, uh, we, we've got a great relationship with that and I, and I do value his expertise and, and, and really, uh, anxious for the ag programs in Putnam County with Phil's expertise and relationship with Wilton Simpson. But, uh, and I would like to thank and, and Linda for putting herself out there and, and, uh, doing what she can to try to make a difference in the lives of the kids. And I think together we'll figure it out. You're gonna learn a lot pretty quick, but, uh, that, I think Tampa will, new board training and all will, will make a big difference and help a lot. But, uh, beyond that, I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving. I did, uh, get the results of the audit, uh, finding in the mail. I've never seen an audit yet that didn't have audit findings. I thought we did quite well and I know that the superintendent will be working with finance to straighten out the, the seemingly minute, uh, findings that they had, but I, I was pleased that it wasn't.
We've already got a plan.
Wasn't as bad as it normally is, but I knew you would, Rick, and I appreciate that. So I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Mrs. Wagner?
Well, I did, uh, I just want to say I'm, I'm extremely honored to be here. I'm looking very forward to serving with everyone on the board. I'm, I'm a little jealous of all those grandbabies you're talking about. I don't have any yet. My boys just aren't cooperating so far. But, uh, you know, despite not having children in this school system, I did raise two through them and, through Putnam County. Um, and I do just want to give back and I'm looking at this as simply an opportunity to serve the county and most importantly, serve the children. I think every decision that's made up here needs to be focused on what's best for the children of this county and improving our schools. And it's, it boils down to that and I, I simply will do everything I can in the future to make the best decisions that, that I can and to help as a board for us to make best decisions.
Thank you so much. Mr. Leary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and, uh, yeah, thank you for the opportunity, uh, to serve this, this, the board and the school district and, and the kids. Um, as I said this morning, uh, my grandfather served, uh, as a school board member, I believe, for twelve years from nineteen forty-eight to nineteen sixty. Uh, my mother taught for twenty-five years. Um, of course, my sister was in administration and, uh, spent many years in the school system. So, um, I also had the opportunity to represent the school district in, in my consulting capacity years ago, uh, when they were doing a school concurrency element or in the process of doing that. Um, and, uh, enjoyed my time in Tallahassee with, uh, Mr. Buckles and his staff and, um, hoping that, that I can get the superintendent up there for the big, uh, ag day that they'll have and, uh, meet, uh, new commissioner Wilton Simpson. And, uh, I really look forward to working with the board. We've got some great opportunities in front of us and I think that, uh, only, only good things can, can come about. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Leary. Thanks to all of the board members, uh, for the wishes, for happy, uh, Thanksgiving. And Mrs. Wagner, you hit it on the head and that's, that's why the five of us are here. It's about our children, making sure that we provide the very best for them. And it starts in the classroom and so we appreciate our teachers, our employees, our staff and the staff that works here, uh, closely with Dr. Serency to make this district what it is. Because we want our children to be able to compete on any level with anybody that comes out of any college, any school. And so we thank you for the differences and we'll celebrate the backgrounds that we bring to this board so that we can make the best decisions. And even if we disagree with our voting, we still agree that it's all about the children and it's not about us. And so we're gonna give our very best. All right, at this time, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Board Chair. Uh, I'm Charlie Douglas. I was born and raised here in Palatka and, uh, came back here about ten years ago and I think we've been the board chair about eight years. And, uh, honored to serve, I'm a product of the Putnam County school system. And I graduated from Palatka High School and we're grateful for the opportunity, uh, to serve in this role as the board attorney. And we have the, uh, the honor and privilege of helping the district and many different departments and areas within the walls of, of the district. And then also on the outside, we are, we have different litigation matters that are going on from time to time, like the opioid lawsuit that we, um, stay very busy with. Also, the, um, the, there's a statewide issue with the, the books and subpoenas that are being sent out to all the districts and, uh, things of that nature. And also, we, we don't do this with just one person. So, uh, Carol Simpson, who is here with us today, is also an attorney in our firm. And if I may brag on Carol just a brief moment, she spent twenty-one years at the Attorney General's Office in Tallahassee. And we were so lucky that she moved to Putnam County because of family and she is a talented writer and just a, a gifted lawyer. And I'm so grateful that, um, she, she is here to help support and to, to, uh, marshal and lead a lot of the legal issues that, um, come through our department. And another exciting thing that's happening right now in the legal department is the research that's being done on this new aviation curriculum with Colonel Ski and Joe Theobald out at QI Robertson, leadership with Superintendent Serency and Liz Coleman and Laura France and so many others in the room. And as a aviation enthusiast myself, I'm really excited about this particular legal project. Uh, how we can, uh, sort through all the different liability aspects of it. But I think this aviation curriculum has the, the potential to have a transformational impact in this community. And I'm so excited to have a very small role in, in supporting that.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you so much, Mr. Attorney. Mr. Superintendent?
Charlie, I want to thank you for being at our meeting and it was a very productive meeting. I think we had it last week, I believe, and, um, just kind of a thought group came together and talking about some ideas for an aviation academy. And, and actually, we met earlier this morning and, and kind of looked at some of the numbers and all, but that's kind of our next big initiative. And I think that will really serve our, not only our area, our region well, but I just want to say this, board, I'm, I'm so excited. This is my sixth year as superintendent and it's, uh, I've loved every minute of it. But now I think we are really transitioning to a very historic time and you guys are gonna be part of that because, I don't know if you heard or not, but we just passed a three hundred million dollar bond referendum. And actually, you voted on something about it today. But the neat thing is, Mr. Bowling has hit the ground running and is actually in the process of hiring a project manager. I think that's what we're calling it, right, or facility specialist?
Facilities.
Facilities.
Facilities planner, it's got a fancy name.
We approved that at the last meeting.
Approved that last meeting, but that person will kind of be the, uh, the point person. And our, our plan is, and, and you can read today's paper, by the way, we have a little, little article on the front page about it. Uh, but we're, we are expecting to start three projects this coming summer. Two in Crescent City and one in Palatka.
Wonderful.
And, uh, it's gonna be a, a good time for our district. That's just the beginning, that's our first phase. We'll have two more phases after that. So over the next ten years, it's gonna be really busy in this district. And our kids are gonna be, they're gonna have things that, um, anything, any other kid in Florida has, our kids are gonna have that opportunity.
And surrounding districts are gonna be beating down outdoors.
Yep, they'll be, uh, yep, it'll be a great day for Putnam County.
Yes.
And not, not to say, we're also in the student achievement business and, uh, you know, our kids, I talk about the graduation rate all the time and, you know, it's gonna be even more challenging as time goes by. But currently, we have no schools in state turnaround and we're working hard to sustain that. And we're implementing our new standards, everything that's going on. But I do want to say, I'm very proud of our principals. We had our principals come in yesterday, met all day long with our staff and we, we looked at data, set goals for the rest of the year. You know, they're implementing the new state assessments, uh, progress monitoring one. And we looked at last year's data and we looked at the first iteration of the progress monitoring. And we really dug down by grade level and looked at what can we do to improve? So it's, it, it doesn't happen by accident. Our principals really are crunching the numbers and, and have really become experts, I think, on, um, making sure that they do everything they can for their kids. So y'all are in a great position and I look forward to your leadership and I really look forward to us working together. And, um, just to let you know, on board days or any day, come in and see me. If you have a concern, call me, you know, call Susan. We can set up a time and talk about things because when you get up here to vote, I want everything, all the information that you have, all the questions answered. And that's what we're here for. We want you to make the best decision possible. So looking forward to it, look forward to seeing you in Tampa for those of you going, and I think it'll be very informative. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anything else to come before the board?
And Susan and has, uh, and staff is, we have a little luncheon for you, right?
Oh, look at that.
Just to celebrate your first day on the job.
Okay, and we just want to make sure, Mr. Leary, that you go and get your picture taken because I think the food is gonna be so good, I want you staying.
Oh, thank you.
And then we're gonna take a group.
A group picture, yeah.
Photo for the website, so we're gonna do that. So is there anything else to come?
I'd just like to, to remind the two new members, anything, any complaints you get, don't sit on them. Call the superintendent and he'll direct it to the principal and they'll try to find out what they can do to get things to the bottom of the story or, or sort it out.
And one of the things I remember in Tampa, when I went for the new board members, was they told us to imagine ourselves. We are in the tower, you know, like a forest ranger. And when we spot, spot smoke in the distance, we're to call him and let him go.
That is his job.
And I just remember that and, and so.
It could be GP or Seminole, now make sure.
Yeah, but we gotta make sure that it's, and so, and that's how we, we make our district great, working together and, and hearing, you know, from everyone.
Don't let complaints fester, get to the bottom of them as quick as you can.
All right.
Thank y'all very much.
Anything else to come before the board? If not, before we adjourn, uh, if you don't mind, we'll say grace. Father, we thank you for this day, for this productive day. Thank you, God, for this board, for this district and for all the people that make it work. Now, God, we pray your blessing upon the food that is prepared. We pray your blessings upon every hand that prepared it. And as we partake of it, bless it to the nourishment of our bodies, that we might do your will in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.